Call this meeting to order. The Rockledge City Council, regular meeting Wednesday, June the 7th, 2017 at 6:00 PM. City Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Councilman Forrester.
Here.
Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell.
Here.
City Attorney Manick Glier.
Here.
City Manager Fettrow.
Here.
All please stand for the invocation tonight. It's going to be by Councilman Hartzell and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
As a professor, I happen to know that all the answers are in the back of the book. So I found my book and I went to the back of the book and I found something that just jumped right out at me. So that's my prayer tonight. The first two things that you see in the Star Spangled Banner are questions and we always sing that. The next stanza, though, stood out to me. "Oh thus be it ever where free men shall stand between their love's homes and the war's desolation. Blessed with victory and peace, may the heaven rescued land; praise the power that made and preserved us a nation. Then conquer we must when our cause is just, and this be our motto: In God is our trust. And a star-spangled banner in triumph shall wave, o'er land of the free and the home of the brave." Lord, please let that be.
Thank you. Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The council has before them the minutes of the May 17, 2017, meeting. What's the pleasure, the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neil.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on May the 17th, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now have presentations. Our first presentation tonight is a city employee of the quarter, second quarter 2017. Could Barbara Chrisler come on up?
Barbara, on behalf of myself as Mayor of the City of Rockledge and the City Council, the citizens of Rockledge and your fellow employees, please accept my congratulations on being selected as the City Employee of the Quarter 2017. Your dedication, dependability, and attention to detail contribute to our Public Works Department functioning in an effective manner. Most recently, your record-keeping and reports have played a key role in the aftermath of Hurricane Matthew with our FEMA process. Mr. Tryne, Finance Director, stated, "I'm working with Barbara Chrisler. I can say only that I am very impressed with her professionalism, diligence, and attention to detail." Mrs. Chrisler was no less than instrumental in the creating, capturing, maintaining, organizing, and delivering of months of work of data necessary to prepare the project worksheets for the Federal Emergency Management Agency. This additional and rather large undertaking was met with, in my opinion, the same constant willingness to compete, to complete whatever work is necessary that she displays in all of her interactions with internal and external customers of the city. You are an excellent representative of the City of Rockledge employees. Congratulations. Here's your certificate. Hang on a second, I got some more. Not for me, for somebody else.
Our next is Business of the Quarter, Second Quarter 2017. Andy Romine, come on up.
Andy Romine, President, Wusthoff Medical Center, Rockledge, A Stewart Family Hospital, 110 Longwood Avenue, Business of the Quarter, Second Quarter 2017. Andy, on behalf of the Rockledge Business Development Committee, it gives me great pleasure to inform you that Wusthoff Medical Center, Rockledge, A Stewart Family Hospital, has been selected as Business of the Quarter for the second quarter of 2017. For the years that the hospital has been located in Rockledge, it has always been a wonderful corporate partner. The hospital has always donated to several city-sponsored events such as the Fourth of July Picnic, the City of Rockledge Employees Charity Golf Tournament, and our Wednesday Frenzies, et cetera, et cetera. You recently hosted a Business Alliance meeting and have held numerous job and health fairs in the past. We look forward to working with the hospital to improve our community for many more years to come. Congratulations. There's your certificate.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And I got a pen for you, too.
Okay.
So not only does... Father had one, you have one, okay? I was going to give you one, but then I dropped it. Let's go out there and get a picture.
Yeah, thank you.
And then I'll let you say something, okay?
Sure, come on. Come on up.
Thank you all very much. Certainly appreciate this great honor. We, obviously, Wusthoff has been a partner with the city for quite some time, 75 years, 75 years plus a few months, to be exact. We are, we feel very fortunate for the support that we get from the city and we actually, it's an exciting time at the hospital right now. We just had a company out of Boston by the name of Stewart purchase the hospital about 45 days ago or so. We are extremely excited about the model of care that they bring, big focus on the community, health of the community, prevention of illness, wellness, and really, you know, our continued partnership will be extremely important to the success of our organization and obviously, any support we can provide moving forward, please feel free to reach out and happy to help out in any way we can. So thank you very much. Appreciate this award. Thank you, sir.
You, too. It's a long relationship between Wusthoff and the City of Rockledge. For those of you in the audience who don't know, for 75 years, 1941, the City of Rockledge donated the land to start the Wusthoff Hospital. And there was $12,000 raised in the community and I think it was Mr. Wusthoff, actually, is the guy that put the $12,000 up. And the city put the land up for it. The land where Wusthoff is used to be the city golf course. We used to have a municipal golf course. And the golf course during the '30s failed, of course, during the recession, and a group took the golf course and moved it to Fitz Boulevard where it is today. And they will be celebrating their 100 years next year, 1918, which is really fantastic for the City of Rockledge. We're very proud of that as well. But we thank Wusthoff for everything you do for the city and hope to have another 75 years of a commitment with you as well and look forward to it. Thank you for coming, Andy. We really appreciate it. Can I get the other ones to stand also? Be recognized? We have the CFO, Sean? No.
Samuel.
Samuel? We have Sean with the A CFO, right?
Right.
And Angelique? It's Andy's administrative assistant. Thank you for coming, all of you. Yeah, I got you out here earlier than you thought. Okay, our next is our Commercial Beautification, 1934 South Fitz Boulevard. Ben, come on up.
You've been here before for this.
Rockledge Animal Clinic, 1934 South Fitz Boulevard, Rockledge, Florida. As Chairman of the Rockledge Environmental Enhancement Board, it is with great pleasure that I inform you that your business, Rockledge Animal Clinic, at 1934 South Fitz Boulevard, has been chosen to receive the Board's Excellence in Beautification Award for the Second Quarter of 2017 in the Commercial category. The Board wishes to express its appreciation to you for the time and resources spent in the perpetual maintenance of your facility in such a manner that is indeed an asset to our community, and we thank you very much for that. And let me present you with your Beautification Award, something else to hang on your walls.
Okay. Did I ever give you one, Ben? I don't think so.
I'm going to give you one now.
Okay.
Okay, well, good. I can have a picture taken.
Okay.
Now for Excellent in Residential Beautification, 971 Pelican Lane, Hope Grubb. Is Hope here? Well, there's Hope's house. We'll make sure that she does get this certificate Beautification Award. Now for the big one tonight. We're going to recognize one of our own. Dr. Jolie Smith, come on down. Brenda?
First of all, I'm going to present you with a certificate of commendation. On behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Rockledge, it is an indeed pleasure to congratulate you on being awarded the Spectrum Space Coast Daily Lifetime Achievement Award, which is really great. Brenda's going to read something as well. Go ahead, Brenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Spectrum Space Coast Daily Lifetime Achievement Award. The lessons taught by sports provide a philosophy of life for Dr. Jolie Smith, educator, advocate, and mentor. The parents of this Cocoa native always instilled in him and his three siblings the importance of a good education and participation in sports. Dr. Smith chose baseball as his game, which helped him achieve his educational goals of a bachelor's degree from Florida A&amp;M University, where he made the team as a freshman, a rare feat. He captained the baseball team in his junior and senior years. Without the sports scholarship he earned, there was no way Dr. Smith could have gone to college. With a master's degree in education, also from Florida A&amp;M University, a doctorate in education from the University of Florida, go Gators, Dr. Smith went on to do his parents' proud. His alma mater honored his efforts by naming him to the university's Sports Hall of Fame in 1996. As a classroom teacher, coach, director of athletics, assistant principal, dean, and provost during a long and distinguished career in Brevard, Broward, and Dade Counties, Dr. Smith always strived to be a role model for young people. In the sports arena, one of his first jobs was as a head coach, pardon me, head football, basketball, and baseball coach, and also as athletic director for Gibson High School, a black school in Titusville, dean and provost of Eastern Florida State Colleges for Brevard campuses until his retirement in 2000. Dr. Smith also served as executive director of the Moore Multicultural Center. Although coaxed out of his retirement, he currently is the executive advisor to the president and college ambassador at Eastern Florida State College. In honor of his commitment to higher education, the college's Board of Trustees dedicated the Dr. Jolie Smith Teacher Center at the college's Melbourne campus. And lastly, among the roomful of awards he has earned through the years is the humanitarian award presented by Onyx Magazine in 2005. The United Third Bridge honored Dr. Smith with the Tano Award for his achievements, pardon me, his efforts to advance the cause of the Hispanic community in Brevard County. Junior Achievement of the Space Coast inducted him into the Business Hall of Fame in 2006. Dr. Smith also was the recipient of the Lifetime Achievement Living Legend Award of the South Brevard and double ACP. And for 32 years, Dr. Smith has served Rockledge as a Rockledge City Council member. The list of organizations go on and on, but he has supported these with his time and talent, which includes the Circles of Care, the Salvation Army, Space Coast Rolling Readers, United Way of Brevard, and the Boys and Girls Club. The former Magnolia Street Park in Cocoa was renamed as Jolie Smith Recreation Center in recognition of his hard work with the community's young and old. Please help us congratulate Dr. Jolie Smith.
Folks, this man has given 32 years of his life to the City of Rockledge, serving on our boards here. He's given much more to Brevard County in itself, not just City of Rockledge. This man has buildings named after him, he has streets named after him, he has sports complexes named after him, and I'm sure he has some children named after him as well. But we are very proud of him here in the City of Rockledge and he's our gem up here on the City Council. We really appreciate everything he does.
Thank you, Senator Mayor.
Let's go have a... Let me present this with you. That's your certificate. There's a little something for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go out here. And I want his wife to come up, Almati. Come on. Come on up. You're not going to get away with this. I have a picture taken of all of us.
Well, one more person that would like to introduce herself to the council, I'm going to call her up. Abby Johnson? Come on up, Abby.
How do you speak after such greatness? You don't hear that much said about a person unless it's posthumously, so I'm honored to be here. I'm here to introduce myself to you. I'm Abby Johnson. I am the Intergovernmental Coordinator with the St. John's River Water Management District. Essentially, I'm your connection to the leadership at the St. John's River Water Management District. So should you have questions, concerns, or a need for presentations, by all means, just reach out and we'll provide such. I am here just to express our thanks. We're thankful to have such great partners. We're thankful for the rain. And my only note about the rain is although it's raining, please continue to conserve and think about our long-term sustainability of such a precious natural resource. Those are my only comments. I would love to wax poetic, but you have a full agenda. So should you have any questions, I'll happily answer them.
Well, thank you for coming, Abby. Does anybody have any questions, Abby?
Are you the new Ann Bendetti?
Yes, I am the new Ann Abby.
So everybody up here has your card now.
Yes, sir.
And we are active, so we will be calling you.
Fantastic.
Anytime we got a problem, we're going to call you.
Absolutely. I expect nothing less.
And anytime we need some money, we're going to call you.
That's what I expect.
Okay.
What I don't hear from you is when I'm concerned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Abby. Let me figure out where I'm at here, folks. Hold on just a second. So our next is a presentation by our accountant, our auditors.
Good evening.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Christine Noel-Ryan. I'm with Carrigs &amp; Ingram. Our address is 215 Bay 2 Drive in Melbourne. I'm just going to give you a brief presentation of your financial statements. So if you look on page one, this is our external auditor's opinion over all of your financial statements, and it's an unmodified opinion. So if you want to think of it in terms of, like, I had someone ask me, is it a happy or frowny face? It's a happy face.
For those of you in the audience, this audit is through September the 30th, 2016. Our fiscal year starts October 1st every year, so this audit's for last year. Go ahead.
On page 17, this is your government-wide financial statements. So if you look towards the bottom, you have your total net position. Your governmental activities went up $860,000 and your business-type activities went up $1 million. So that's always a positive. So your net position is similar to equity if you're thinking of a company. If you look at page 20 and 21, these are your governmental fund financial statements. This is the way you're used to seeing it presented for budgetary purposes. So in your general fund, you have approximately six months of expenses in your unassigned fund balance, which is good. The GFOA generally recommends a minimum of three, so you're above and beyond that. So for financial sound purposes, you're considered a financially sound city. One thing we've been getting a lot of questions on is your net pension liability. So you don't see it here on your governmental funds, but it was back on page 17. Towards the middle of the page in your liabilities, you have net pension liability. So it went up approximately $300,000 for your governmental activities. A lot of people don't understand why, since the market was pretty good last year. But if you flip in the back to page 83, this one, this page is just your general employees, but you'll see it's the same for all of them. About four lines down, there's a change of assumptions. So the state required that you change your mortality tables and you also had to change in your expected investment rate of return. So this caused an increase in your expected net pension liability, which caused that to go up even though you had large positive investment income last year. In your footnotes, one thing I want to point out is on page 39, this is a change from the previous year. There's a new GASB that you had to implement this year. It's called GASB 72. So this made governments more in line with for-profits. So you'll see on the right-hand column, there's levels. So Level 1 is things that are publicly traded. You can liquidate them very easily. Level 2 is more secondary markets such as bonds. And then you don't have any Level 3s, but those would be things such as, you know, a privately-held company like Mom &amp; Pop Shop. So it's not anything good or bad, it's just new and different.
This is the first time I've ever seen ratings, though, on any audit we've ever had, the AAA ratings.
Yeah, so these are all, these are all in compliance with your city's investment policy. So we have it broken out there by rating, so you can see that none of them are below what you have, what was in your investment policy. Unless anyone had any questions on the statements, I was going to jump to the back where we had a few more reports.
Go ahead. The holder question's probably till the end, but go ahead.
Okay. On page 97, we have to issue a report on your internal controls.
97, you said?
97. So on page 98, you'll see at the top left there, there's 2016-01. So we had a comment on revenue recognition, and this was purely timing. It wasn't that it wasn't recorded at all, it was just not recorded in the proper period. And then we have another one for 2016-02. Again, that was a timing issue of which period the invoice was recorded. So it wasn't that anything was improperly paid or not paid, it was just timing of the period it was recorded in. On page 101, we have the management letter. This is required by the Auditor General. It goes through several statutes that we have to report on. On page 102, we have 2016-03. So these are things that are more improvement points, best practices, things we noticed. So your participant data that you store, that you send to the actuary for all your pensions, you have a very manual process for putting that together. You can't export it from your software currently, so there were some typos. Nothing was enough significant to cause a change in what the actuary calculated, but just the process itself, there were typos. So you can either do a more detailed manual review and take more time, or possibly change to a system that could export it out. The next one was expenditures in excess of appropriations. So there were two adjustments done after your last budget adjustment. One was the invoice that we found that wasn't recorded in the proper period for the CRA fund, and the other one was after the final adjustment for compensated absences was calculated for vacation, it threw it slightly over what was budgeted for the police department. So this isn't that you were budgeting wrong or there's anything wrong with your process, but by Florida statute, if you're over budget, we have to put a comment in here. And the last letter we have is on page 105. We have to report on your controls regarding your investment policies and procedures. We did not find any errors in this area.
Good. Anybody have any questions on our audit? Everybody's had these 105 pages to review for a week now, so there's a lot of information here, and I'm sure everybody has read it and looked over, and it's very detailed. I don't remember one being this detailed before, and I really appreciate that.
Yeah, every year, there's more and more footnotes that we have to add.
But I'm sure you have met with our Finance Director as well as our City Manager and discussed the...
Yeah, we met and more detailed met with City Manager and the Finance Director, and your Finance Director, actually, he prepared all the footnotes to the financial statements. We just prepared these statements itself because we had software that made it a little bit easier.
All right, good. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We need a motion to...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll move to be in receipt of the audit.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Network Administration Administrator Chris Dyer? Come on up, Chris. Going to talk about City Council emails. Your name and address for the record, please, Chris.
Chris Dyer, IT Coordinator, City Hall, Rockledge. Last council meeting, you had an open discussion concerning your city emails.
Mic closer to you.
Okay, so last council meeting, you had an open discussion concerning your city emails. I have created a webmail interface so you can use to take your personal email address out of the loop. And I've got a few screenshots up here. Log on, that's the desktop interface. One more, Matthew. That would be the mobile interface, so you could use that on your phone or your tablet. And that's pretty much all I have.
So that will come up, will that come up in our email now to tell us we have a...
I'm going to have to meet with everybody individually to go over the steps we need to do to change it over.
Okay. Good.
Yes, you are.
Because I'm a little slow on that, okay?
Some will require a little more input.
I went to Rockledge, I remember. Do we need a motion on this?
If you'd like to...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
To move forward with it.
I think, I'm not sure that we need to have a formal motion on this, but I think it's well worthwhile. It has been an issue receiving emails via the city, but I have to respond from my personal email, and I think it looks a lot more professional to be able to respond from the P.O.'neal at City of Rockledge, because my other email address goes in the spam folder. So I would move that we go forward with this, direct the City Manager to work with Mr. Dyer to do whatever needs to be done that he does, and then we can coordinate individually with the City Manager at her discretion, directly with Chris, to... with the City Manager at her discretion, directly with Chris, to do some training because I'm going to need some.
We don't need a motion, do we?
Second. He just made a motion, and we have a second.
He did.
Sorry. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You got it, Chris. We'll be meeting with you.
Thank you.
Spend a little extra time with the Deputy Mayor, okay?
Spend a little extra time with this entire side of the dais.
Okay, Jerry Sampson will not be with us tonight, and we have no financial report. Now we move into public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. A, our first one, second reading, and a public hearing. Mr. Deputy O'Neill.
Mr. Chairman, I offer ordinance number 1709-2017, adding a defined contribution plan component for the police and fire employees' retirement plans for second reading by title only and for public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 1709-2017, an ordinance of the City of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, adding Section 5.6, quote, "defined contribution plan component," close quote, to the City of Rockledge Fire Employees Retirement Plan, adding Section 5.6, quote, "defined contribution plan component," close quote, to the City of Rockledge Police Employment Employees Retirement Plan to provide for a defined contribution plan component in the police and fire retirement plans in case mutual consent is not reached with respect to the use of premium tax revenues. Declaring that invalidity, many portions thereof shall not affect the remaining portions of this ordinance, providing for the effective date thereof and for other purposes.
At this time, I open this up to the public for discussion. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to discuss this particular second reading tonight? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to discuss this under public hearing? See and none. I close public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution, our next, supporting Memorial Highway designation of State Road 519, Fitz Boulevard, as Dr. Martin Luther King Memorial Highway.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Since we've sent up a similar resolution to the legislature several times in the past, I'm going to move that we waive the reading and adopt the resolution and try again.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You happy, Ms. Collins?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on it just a second? I was in Tallahassee a year ago when it was lumped together with a number of other memorial highway designations. And the reason I was given that it did not go through is because they received them at the last minute, and they, before they started just designating highways for people, the President of the Senate, I believe, wanted to make sure that they were properly vetted, that we didn't name something for Al Capone, for lack of a better term. So they just wanted to make sure that the Senate had the opportunity to vet all of those people because they had a large number on a single bill.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think Ms. Ruth Collins deserved a round of applause for her hard work and oversight of the seat of this state's place. Thank you, Mrs. Collins.
Okay, reports from boards and committees. Mr. Daskey.
I move to be in receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. The Rockledge Environmental Enhancement, the Tree Board, minutes of meeting on May 11, 2017. The Citizens Recreation Advisory Board, minutes of meeting on May 18, 2017. Community Redevelopment Agency, Board of Commissioners, minutes, meeting on May 24, 2017. And the Business Development Committee, minutes of meeting on May 30, 2017. And to consider independently any recommendations contained therein.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our first one is Community Redevelopment Agency, Board of Commissioners, minutes of meeting, recommendation. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I presented to the CRA Board, you know, the city installed a forced main on Florida Ave some time ago, and several citizens actually have asked, when are you going to finish the project? So we thought that perhaps to pave that entire length of Florida Avenue from US 1 up to the northern city limits would provide for a very nice finished look with the milling and paving and then the RPMs, the reflective paving markers. Anyway, that's coming before you all to ask for your support out of the CRA funds for $130,000 to pave Florida Avenue.
Anybody have any questions, City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I noticed that the City of Cocoa has finished that serving surface, and it looks like a million dollars.
I know. Well, it was several million dollars.
Several million dollars.
May I?
Yes.
And Councilman Hartzell, absolutely. And not as part of this project, but the CRA Board hopefully will consider in next year's budget a secondary phase to conduct a feasibility study to do other types of beautification on our portion of Florida Ave as well. So you will be hearing more about that in the future, but that's not a part of this request at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'll move to accept the recommendation of the CRA and authorize the City Manager to negotiate a contract and a notice to proceed.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? See and none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reappointments and appointments. Mr. O'Neill.
Mr. Chairman, on the Code Enforcement Board, I would move to appoint Michael Lipinski, who is in the audience right now.
Mike, stand up and be recognized.
By acclamation to the Code Enforcement Board, he would be taking the businessperson position on that board.
Great.
Second.
Call for a question.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Welcome to Rockledge, Mike. I know you've lived here a long time, but... We're expecting big things out of you. All right? Go ahead, Pat.
On B, Mr. Chairman, the Ministerial Approval of the Brevard County School Board Rep on the Planning Commission, I move for the appointment of Erin Flynn to represent the school board on the Planning Commission.
Is Erin here?
She is not.
Okay.
Second.
We got a motion. We got a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Unfinished business. Report on the annual performance of the City Attorney. Let me find, what page is that on? I'm sorry, I didn't. 187? Did I go too far? Here it is. Okay, everybody turned their reviews in on time this time, which I'm very satisfied, Frank.
Mine was early. I heard. I'm very impressed. And the City Attorney's overall job performance was a 4.96 out of a possible 5. I don't know if you can get much better than that. I'm going to find out where that 400s went.
You never know. But that equates to rating superior, and we appreciate what you do for us. And as you can tell, you have a lot of respect from your councilpeople, and...
It is an honor and a pleasure to serve with this board.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, our next action item, approval of First Amendment to Save Our Indian River Lagoon Local Infrastructure. What's that? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move to accept the annual City Attorney's Evaluation Report.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Sorry about that. Our next action item, approval of the First Amendment to the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Local Infrastructure Surtax Interlocal Agreement. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all may recall, the city was awarded $880,530 from the Indian River Lagoon Half-Cent Sales Tax Oversight Committee. So in order to engage in that interlocal agreement, Council entered into an agreement with them. But this is just some editing of that document for some language corrections, and then for the distribution of the total maximum daily load, the TMDLs, before you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. For those of you in the audience, this is our Breeze Webb subdivision off the river in Rockledge. We took a 60- or 70-year-old subdivision, took 141 houses off of septic tanks and put them on city sewer. And Abby, you gave us some money for that, too, but you didn't know that.
You did.
You got that money from Ann.
Doesn't count for you.
But the bar was set high.
So you got to step up now and bring us a check for something, okay?
We'll put it to good use.
Yes. Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve the First Amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the First Amendment to Save the Indian River Lagoon Local Infrastructure Surtax Interlocal Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. C, discussion, Florida League of Cities, E. Harris Drew Municipal Lifetime Achievement Award. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this is actually the second time this item's coming before you all. I know last time you had instructed me to work for us to nominate former Mayor Larry Schultz. So in doing our research and pulling together that information, we did learn that it must be a currently elected official. So unfortunately, former Mayor Schultz would not be eligible for this nomination. So I just bring it back to you all for any direction you'd like to provide to me either this evening or, well, it would need to be this evening, actually. The deadline is July 14, and our next council meeting would be July 19.
I still think this council should consider Deputy Mayor Pat O'Neill for what he does for the Florida League of Cities as well as the City of Rockledge. And I think this is something important, that we have a recommendation from this city council. And we don't have to send nobody. We can leave it, but I think we should at least put Deputy Mayor O'Neill in there. But that's up to the city council.
Actually, I was kind of thinking the same thing when I read that Larry Schultz did not qualify. So I'll make a motion, move to nominate Deputy Mayor O'Neill for the Florida League of Cities E. Drew Harris Municipal Lifetime Achievement Award.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Sorry, Pat, you're going.
Thank you. Most deserving, Pat. Most deserving.
I'll hold that gold coin for you.
Consent business, Councilman Daskey.
Move for approval of these consent business items. A is a letter of congratulations from the Mayor and Council for the Monroe High School class of 1967's 50-year reunion. B is the approval of a school resource officer agreement for Rockledge High School, McNair Magnet, Kennedy Middle School, Gulfview, and Anderson Elementary Schools for the 2017-18 school year. School Board of Brevard County, and this is for the Police Department.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. This is consent business. There is no discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. New business, action item, approval of 2018 Legislative Priorities for the City of Rockledge and the Space Coast League of Cities. Is that you, City Manager?
I certainly can start it, but as you all recall, on May 17, Deputy Mayor O'Neill gave you all a draft, if you will, of both legislative priorities for both the City of Rockledge and the Space Coast League of Cities. And so I don't know, Mayor, if you wanted to turn it to the Deputy Mayor to see if there's any other...
That's up to him.
If they're ranked by priority right now, if you felt that they needed to be changed, any of them eliminated, anything added to it, I do hope to take it to the Space Coast League of Cities Intergovernmental Committee for their consideration. At a committee meeting, that we can take it to the entire Space Coast League Board of Directors at the August meeting, so we're prepared. We will be the first city to get their legislative priorities in.
Everybody's had a chance to review these. Does anybody have any changes or additions or anything on this?
Are these supposedly in priority order?
They could be changed, I guess. I don't know if they're even prioritized. They could be the order which we came up with them.
Okay. Just to me, I think one of the biggest threats facing us right now is the... Hate to say bizarre, but the unusual way that the state legislature is... They go out and they tell people they're cutting taxes, but what they're doing is cutting state and local, I mean, local and county government income and leaving the state's income alone. The state gets most of their income from sales tax, and you don't see the sales tax going down. They want to dictate things that they don't get a cut of, like property taxes and communications, you know, various other things that don't affect the state income but affect the cities. And to me, that's been an ongoing thing for the last several years from Tallahassee. And I think in order for us to protect the ability to serve our citizens, that that has to be a focus for the League.
Does that... You can represent us with, Pat?
Without a doubt. It's the, a constant with the League of Cities, both the Space Coast and the Florida, is don't mess with local revenue. You know, if you want to do a $700 million tax relief, fine. Make it yours $700 million. I've actually watched one of the members of the Florida House stand in the back of the auditorium or in session saying, when are you going to learn to play in your own sandbox? Leave them alone. They didn't listen.
They never do. Pat, did you have something?
No, just basically want to make sure that the money that Frank expressed, that's a home rule item, and we've already got that listed as our first thing. Or do we need to separate it out as a separate item and state it? It's listed under the Space Coast Priorities as number one. It's not listed under ours as number one. I just, I'm basically just venting more than anything because I'm well aware that the League of Cities, Councilman O'Neill, everybody up here is aware of the problem. Those of us particularly who've sat on the Budget and Finance Committee and see in great detail every year what they're, you know, how they're tinkering with the city's income and then trying to make us look bad if we try to recover enough income to make the same services available to the citizens. It's just, it's very frustrating to me. So I'm venting more than anything.
Would you like me to move that one to number one?
That'd be great.
I would.
It's not real hard. I got it on the computer.
Number two?
I think it's number two.
Continue to protect, number two, under the Space Coast League of Cities. Well, I'll quote, I'll just move that to the very top.
Okay.
And Pat, while you've got it open, would you look at number four and hook that up with protect and restore the IRL? It's a Scribner note.
Right, okay. I see it. I can fix that.
All right. I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2018 Legislative Priorities.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the 2018 Legislative Priorities as amended.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Action item B, designation of voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, August 17 through August 19, 2017. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we just need you all to vote whoever you're, designate whoever your voting delegate will be for the Florida League of Cities conference.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll nominate Councilman O'Neil, Deputy Mayor O'Neil, for that voting delegate position.
If it's in order, I'd say a motion to close the nomination on a sad name.
Yeah, I know where he lives. If he doesn't do a good job, I'll go see him.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Dr. Smith? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Petitions, remonstrances, and communications at this time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the City Council about anything to do with the City of Rockledge? We're here to listen to you. Is there anybody in the audience at this time that would like to speak to the City of Rockledge about anything? You have any cards at all? No cards? Okay, see ye none. Let's move on. Reports, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do have a few things. Literally today, the city, we received an invoice. Historically, the city has been a, I'll say a cosponsor of the Fourth of July fireworks down in Cocoa Village, and so we got one of our two invoices today, which is for $3,000 for the Brevard Symphony Orchestra and the meal event for Fourth of July Day, that event. So I wanted to bring it here to hopefully receive your approval, but I will bring it back formally on July 19th as an agenda item under consent, if you allow me to move forward tonight. So I was looking for council's support or approval to the Brevard Symphony Orchestra for $3,000, a sponsorship for the Fourth of July event.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I move that we approve the $3,000 for the Fourth of July celebration.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Second item is just a friendly reminder, I'm sure you've each received your statement of financial interest document of which to submit, and if you would please perhaps provide a copy to the clerk's office just to keep on record, that would be great.
I sent mine in already.
Okay, we can probably get it.
Lisa, I did not get, make a copy for you. I assumed they copied you on that.
They do not, but anybody that would like to provide me with a copy is welcome.
I just got mine today. You're quick.
I haven't seen mine yet.
Okay, should be coming.
I got mine Friday, I think.
Yeah, I got mine Friday as well.
Turned it in today.
Yeah.
And let the record reflect, I did take my four hours of ethics class Monday as well, online.
It's the only way.
Yeah, it's the only way to do it.
Well, that's an exciting show, too.
Yeah.
I watched it back in January. I was just overcome.
Very, very exciting. For those of you in the audience, the state legislators, in their wisdom, decided that all the city and the county elected officials needed to take an ethics class, but they don't have to take one. The state legislators, they decided that we needed it, but they don't need it.
I think they got that a little backwards. Just saying.
Two more quick things. You all will remember this name, Dr. Bob Anderson. He turns 91 in July, and his daughter is wanting to host a celebration at the Bob Anderson Park there on, off of Plucky Bomb. So she has respectfully asked if the city might consider waiving the rental fee, not the cleanup fee, and not the key deposit fee, et cetera, just some of the rental fees for his 91st birthday. Well, I didn't feel I had the authority to consider that, so I'm bringing it before council for your direction.
I don't think any man should have to pay at a park that's named after him. That's my opinion.
I completely agree.
Amen.
Okay.
So I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we waive the rental fees for Bob Anderson's birthday party at Bob Anderson's Park.
Second?
We're lucky we don't have to pay him royalties to use it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Brenda, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Lastly, just a friendly reminder, for Finance and Budget Committee, tomorrow evening, we'll see your smiling faces here tomorrow evening at 5:30. Thank you, Mayor. Back to you.
Make sure you send Pat a text, because he might...
I got it. I got it.
Okay. Okay. City Attorney Litigation Report, do we have one tonight?
There isn't one. Usually it's the third, or the third week, the second meeting. We don't have one. I'm down to three cases. It's on one page now.
That's amazing.
So, you know, very little hopefully will come up in the near future. Have a nice summer. There is one thing I would like to ask the council, and I just got this today. I'm a member of the Florida Municipal Attorneys Association. We have our annual seminar, the 36th is coming up in St. Pete. In my contract, I have a fee amount to allow me to go to these. Generally, this has always been kind of esoteric, but they've got a chock full of things that I really need to go to, Home Rule provisions, marijuana, zoning, you name it. So I'd really, I would usually have put this on the next meeting, however, we don't have one, and by the time we have our meeting, first meeting in July, the reservations for rooms would be already closed out. So I would just ask the council to authorize me to go to the 36th Annual Florida Municipal Attorneys Association from July 27th to the 29th of 2017.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Forrester?
I'll move that we approve the City Attorney to attend the...
36th Annual...
In that conference.
Florida Municipal, that one.
That conference. Lisa, did you get that?
I did.
I missed one. Can you get one that's just like three words long next time?
You wouldn't expect an attorney association to be a short name, would you?
No, not really.
Good point.
Took me years...
Guys think you get paid by the word.
Took me years just to pronounce your name.
Second?
We got a second?
I don't have a second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. You got it.
Also, I'd really like to thank the council for the evaluation. It's always nice to be appreciated. In my law practice, this is the one thing that I truly enjoy.
Oh, good.
And finally, I'm going to be out of the state from the 27th to the 29th of June. I will make my annual pilgrimage to Fenway Park, and if you need to get me, I'll have my cell with me and my email address, and so if there are any questions that crop up at that time. Still, my favorite is Mr. O'Neil when he called me just as I was going into the Pentagon.
He answered the phone.
And I answered your question.
That's the best part.
And other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Let's go around to Dias. City Clerk?
Hi.
Joe, you're good, right?
Just a couple about the...
I'll talk about that, yeah. Ted?
Just a couple things. I noticed there are a lot of graduations. I went to one in Melbourne for a nephew. We had a family picnic shortly thereafter. It was awesome. I had a chance to go to the sixth grade graduation at Cambridge Elementary School and prevent, present the All Round Best Student Award to two students there for Cocoa Kiwanis. I really appreciate the efforts of the city in Memorial Day Celebration. It was moving, hot. I also want to mention that the Lady Gators were in the World Series and fought a 17-inning game. I happen to watch every pitch on ESPN, so good job by the ladies, even though they didn't bring it home, they put in all the effort, and that's what I have, sir.
Great, thank you. Mr. Dasky?
Just one quick announcement to mark your calendars. Our 9/11 ceremony this year will be on Monday evening, September 11th, at 6:30. We'll be out at the memorial on, at the Fire Station 3 at Morrell. So please, please put your calendars, mark your calendars. The agenda is coming together, and we'll start planning that full force going forward.
Evening?
Yes.
Okay.
6:30 PM.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Dr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Mario Angelo once said that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. Council, on the recognition tonight, I'm most appreciative, and I will continue to be a community public servant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Nothing tonight.
Dr. Forrester?
I have nothing tonight.
Deputy Mayor O'Neil?
Yes, sir. Just a few things. First, I'd like to welcome Mike Lipinski. I've known Mike a number of years. Our kids went to school together. I got to coach his daughter in soccer, among others. Tell her I said hello.
I'm sorry, Mike.
They lived through it. Nobody died. I always reported on my Boy Scout troop, and I'm not going to stop now. They, I thank them for their participation in the Memorial Day event. They do me proud every time. They don't ever, I don't know who's coming, they don't know what they're going to do, but it always works, and so I'm tickled to death with them. Continuing that vein, Tyler Brazelton, Rockledge High School graduate, this year reached the rank of Eagle Scout three hours before he was no longer eligible. Tyler is a last-minute kind of guy.
I see.
He took his Scout Master Conference three hours before he turned 18. You can't do it once you're 18. He finished his Eagle Board three hours before the 90-day window on that, but he made it, and he's headed off to the University of Florida. He's going to be a Gator. Not that I plan to see many of you there. There will not be a Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization meeting in the month of June. They're also taking the month off. Yay on that. I will be attending the Central Florida Metropolitan Planning Organization Alliance on June 16th in Orlando. That's the big group. That's the regional group. It's composed, it's got an 18-member policy board. Lake Sumter MPO is in it, Metro Plan Orlando, the City of Ocala, Marion County, Polk County, River to Sea, which I think really liked the title of that one, that's Volusia County, and the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization meets quarterly to discuss things of a regional nature. I thank you for your nomination for the E. Drew Harris Award. Other than being nominated, that's probably where it's going to stop. There are people that have 30-plus years, as Mayor Schultz did, who didn't get it, but still, I thank you for the acknowledgement. The Fourth of July picnic. Ashley's the coordinator this year, I believe. Am I correct? Ashley Golding?
Yes.
If you haven't signed up for your job yet, go see Ashley. I'm on the grill.
As always.
As always. I love the grill.
Keeps him away from the public.
They're killing you tonight. I want to thank everybody for coming out for our Memorial Day Celebration. It was a success again this year as it was last year, but I think it gets better every year, and it's going to continue to get better as it goes forward, and I'm looking forward to our 9/11 celebration this September as well. Hopefully, we'll have some as good a speakers as we had last year there, and I think it would be very interesting. It always is, and usually we get a crowd, which is great, and hopefully, the crowd will be even bigger this year. But I congratulate Pat for your nomination, and you never know, Pat. You might, you might be the one this year. You never know.
2018.
2018. Okay. Joe?
Mr. Chairman, just before we leave, I think a commendation should be extended to Dr. Fettro and all of the members of the Golf Committee for such a wonderful golf tournament this past weekend for such an outstanding and most needed cause. Congratulations. That's your man.
Thank you.[1711.33]